We now call the meeting to order. If you could please rise if you are able and pay attention to Councilman Parija for the invocation, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. As our guest tonight, Lenissa Frazier, probably everybody knows her husband Carl Frazier. She has kindly joined us tonight to offer our invocation. Lenissa is originally from South Carolina and is a graduate of Fisk University in Nashville, Tennessee, with degrees in political science and English. She has a passion for speaking and seeks opportunities to feed the passion regularly in her duties as the First Lady of New Hope and Love Community Church in Topeka and the wife of Pastor Carl Frazier. I like this next one. At home, Lenessa holds the title of Chief Enforcement Officer and has three beautiful children, 35, 22, and 19, with a granddaughter, Tori, 11, and grandson, Asa, 8. Lenessa is with the Southwest Baptist Church, established in 1959. They are now New Hope and Love Community Church, and their mission is to reach, teach, and equip for the Kingdom. We are a multi-congregational, multicultural, multi-generational, and multifaceted church located at 2901 Southwest Evening Side. Our work in the community, social justice and restoration, community board work, and It Takes a Village with Stephen Massey, to name a few, helps us to extend our ministry beyond the four walls of the sanctuary. Our weekly services include a Wednesday evening Bible studying, and Sunday morning Sunday School, and worship. We are lovingly known as the Little Church with the Big Hugs. Thank you for being with us tonight.
It's a blessing. Let us please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for this day and the opportunity to offer this prayer in the presence of you and this esteemed group in this great city of Topeka, Kansas. We are so grateful for our leaders, Lord. Thank you for the ways you have gifted them to support their constituents in this community so well. Wrap your arms around these men and women to show them love, grace, strength, and encouragement. Provide them with the knowledge needed to approach each situation in the best way possible. Help them to know you and see your presence in the work they do. And, Father, give them the stamina to approach each day and to find a balance between work and life so that they would be sustained. Please provide our leaders with reminders each day of why they decided to dedicate their lives to public service and use that commitment to encourage them to care about issues impacting us all. We ask that you would help them to care for people in need, especially children, and soften their hearts toward the issues of our city. We are so grateful that we have leaders who listen to us. And God, please be with our government officials as they weigh the pros and cons of each constituent's request. Give them wisdom on how to best represent everyone. Father, we also ask that you would give our leaders courage so that even when it's hard, they would continue to boldly represent their constituents' needs and those of the most vulnerable. And finally, Lord, we thank you for the talent that you have provided Gary Woodland and the opportunity to celebrate and recognize him this evening. We ask that you would bless his PGA career, and please know that we would not be upset with another U.S. Open victory or even a Super Bowl or World Series in the area. We know that we have not because we ask not, so that it is in your Son Jesus' name that we ask these things. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do my friends at National Night Out join me? Is he wonderful?
Oh, we have the chiefs with us. Am I supposed to be here? Okay, I guess that's a no. Especially not with you. I know, right? So, first of all, I want to say thank you to these volunteers that you see here. These are individuals that are committed to helping make Topeka the safest capital city. And we are so excited that, I think it was two years ago last year, when we have National Night Outs and we have our community coming together, there is proof that crime is not in our city. And the whole spirit of National Night Out is to bring people from their neighborhoods to get together in a celebration so that we could just get to know each other, have camaraderie, and just celebrate our community and our neighbors. And it's just a beautiful tradition, and our community has been going on for many, many years. And I'm here to proclaim the National Night Out, which is going to be August 10, 2019. And I encourage all of you to make sure that you get in touch with the organization, because even if you don't have a neighborhood association or a Neighborhood Improvement Association, they are more than willing to help you out. And we have great community partners like Resourz that provide additional sides for people to be able to get together, and there's grant opportunities. In order, if you've never done one of these, you could just get a few neighbors together, and as long as we know that you're going to get people together, they will provide you resources. So, without further ado, so that I could pass the mic to the person that's going to speak after I probably took everything that you were going to say, I'm sorry. I will read the proclamation that states that we're as a national association of Town Watch, sponsors a unique nationwide crime and drug violence prevention program on August 10 entitled National Night Out. It is the 36th Annual National Night Out, providing a unique opportunity for our citizens across the community to promote police and community private crime prevention efforts. Safe Streets plays a vital role assisting the Topeka Police Department, the Shawnee County Sheriff's Office, the Shawnee County District Attorney's Office, through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in Topeka and Shawnee County, and is supporting National Night Out locally. So therefore, I, Michelle de la Isla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, hereby proclaim August 10, 2019, as National Night Out. I hope that everybody, please, comes out and have some fun. Who wants to speak a little bit more?
We really appreciate all the support from the City Council, our law enforcement, our fire department, Shawnee County Sheriff's Office. And we do welcome all of you to give us a call at Safe Streets. If you aren't already registered, we have 77 neighborhoods so far, and about 12,500 people committed to coming. So just give us a call. We are sixth in the nation for population our size, so we welcome you to give us a call.
Let's make it number one. Chief, do you want to say a few words?
Well, it's just a great opportunity every year that we come together in our community throughout Topeka and Shawnee County, and like the mayor said, and Judy, that we enjoy a great partnership with the fire department, the sheriff's office, and district attorney. And we are very grateful that the City Council supports these efforts and everything that goes on. So just get out, August 10, have a good time, and meet your neighbors.
Awesome. All right. Thank you very much.
Mayor de la Isla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Clear?
Here.
Ortiz?
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Jensen?
Besant?
Mayes?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
And Lester?
Here.
We now move on to the appointments. If the clerk would read.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Leilani Gray to the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board for an unexpired term ending March 21, 2021.
It is the pleasure of the body.
Motion for approval.
Motion for approval from Mr. Mike Lester, and then we have a second by Councilman Jensen. Any questions or discussion with regards to this appointment? Seeing none, we proceed by voting. The mayor does not vote.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the motion passes. Ms. Lay is here joining us. Gray is here joining us today. If you could please just help us recognize her. Thank you so much for your contribution in our community and for being part of our Sustainability Advisory Board.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. We now move on to item four, the consent agenda. If the clerk would read.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of May 4 through May 31, 2019, and enumerating said expenditures therein. B is approval of a workers' compensation settlement in the amount of $20,000 for injury to the employee sustained while engaged in normal work duties. C are minutes of the regular meeting of June 18 and special meetings of June 19 and June 25, 2019. And there's a list of applications. Dance hall open after midnight in Sierra Montevideo, which staff is recommending approval.
We have heard the consent agenda.
With approval.
We have a motion for approval by Councilman Emerson.
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Jensen. Are there any comments or questions with regards to this item? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on into the action items. We have action item A. If the clerk would read.
A is approval of the 2020 Social Services Grant Allocation Recommendations in the amount of $434,904.
Yes, I will now recognize Chair Cohen for the report on this committee.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. You know, tonight, do you think maybe we could start off by listening to the public comments first? Because many of us have heard a lot about what's, you know, what direction we're going, and you know, there's some people who weren't satisfied with the results. So is it possible that we could just call them up and let them speak first before we start?
If that is the pleasure of the body, we don't have to go for a vote, but if I just see consensus, I'm happy to respect the will of the chair. Absolutely. If we could have, the first person signed up to speak is Toni Stottlemyre.
Good evening, Council. I am Toni Stottlemyre, and I'd like to start by just acknowledging that you have a hard job, and sometimes a very thankless job. So let's start there, just by saying thank you. I'm before you tonight representing your local community action agency, and more importantly, the lower-income population with whom we partner in our community. I am deeply, deeply troubled that you're being asked to support a budget recommendation that if passed as-is, will eliminate supportive and effective services to Topeka's lower-income Hispanic and Latino populations. Our city benefits from investments in our Hispanic and Latino residents and community members. It's acknowledged by members of our Social Services Funding Grant Committee that the current grant-making system has shortcomings that need to be fixed. But fixing the system tomorrow does nothing to help the people today. The power to reject the flawed results and do right by those who depend on your investment rests with each of you and the little buttons that you push this evening. So by way of background, I just want to explain that Community Actions' well-established Latino family development program has filled what would have otherwise been an incredibly apparent gap in our community by providing free English language classes, translation assistance, bilingual access to services that enable workers to pay their fair share of taxes, obtain better jobs, further their educations, support their families, and be valued members of our inclusive community. The program touches the lives of over 400 individuals each year, helping them move from poverty toward prosperity. If you approve the social service recommendation before the council this evening, those supports go away. On the other hand, the city's continued investment in lifting up our Hispanic and Latino residents benefits all of Topeka. Every single one of you in this room is familiar with the dynamics behind the reality that the more we do to build up our neighbors and our workforce and our children and their parents, the better off our entire community is. Here's another example of a simple reality before you. The recommendation to defund Community Actions program has nothing to do with program quality or effectiveness. In fact, we met or exceeded every single one of our established goals by over 94 percent. There are clearly demonstrated process and design failures in the grant evaluation system used by the city, and I pointed many of those out in 2018, with the same flaws that resulted in the city's devastation by stopping funding for our youth development program through the first T of Shawnee County. And here I am again tonight, when we're about to go out and celebrate Gary Woodland and what he represents to this community, pleading with you to acknowledge that decisions made through a clearly flawed system are both hurtful to our city and indefensible by our city leaders. You are likely, in fact, to hear from Mr. Cohen's committee agreement from the subcommittee members that the system has problems that need to be addressed, and that is appreciated. Promising to fix the system in future years isn't enough. To keep the program in operation, council members must reject the proposal before you and opt to include Latino family development in the 2020 city budget. And while you're at it, I ask that you consider the plight of the Topeka seniors, all of which will also be deeply impacted by a negative decision that you could make tonight.
Toni, do you need more time?
I'm concluding, ma'am. Yes.
So, since your time has expired?
Okay.
So is there a motion to extend for an additional minute?
No move.
We have a motion and a second. If we could just proceed by voting.
Thank you. I just thought you were playing music for me.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. You have an additional minute.
Just want to conclude by starting where I started. You have a difficult job, but this decision isn't a difficult one. It's not one that's going to cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars, or any individual, one of you, hundreds of thousands of votes. Take the weight off your shoulders. It's a simple fact. Reject tonight this decision before you. Include the funding for those programs that support the vulnerable people in our community. And I am so proud to be your Community Action Agency representative and to be here with other people who are of the same mind. If you would raise your hands, please, folks that are here supporting this effort this evening. Are there any questions for me?
Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. What percentage of your budget is this?
So we asked for $25,000 for the program. That would be a third of the program budget. For the agency, it would be less than 1% of the budget.
So less than 1% of your entire budget?
For community action, but those funds are all dedicated to other programming. For example, we wouldn't be able to take city money dedicated to Latino family development and spend it on another program. That's not the way grant programs work, so...
So your entire agency has no flexibility in its revenue stream at all?
We have a very small, unlimited reserve fund, general fund.
Okay.
Most of what we receive is through grants.
But I'm not understanding. This is less than 1% of your total budget, and you can't move even 1% of your total budget around to cover this program?
Well, you know, our Board of Directors members are here this evening, and I'm sure they'd be happy to visit with you more about that.
Okay, well, it's a simple question. Can you not move less than 1% of your budget around? And no is an acceptable answer. I just find it fascinating that you're that locked into your budgeting that you can't shuffle that amount of money around.
I can't without putting the corporation at risk, and I can't without breaking contracts that we've been put into agreement with other grantors.
That's very fascinating. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no additional questions, thank you for your remarks.
Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak on this issue is Karen Mitchell.
As mentioned, my name is Karen Mitchell, and I am the board director, on the Board of Directors of the Topeka-Lulak Senior Center. The grant committee's proposed allocation does not include any funding for the Lulak Senior Center. The center has been funded by the city for many years. Our grant request represents 15% of our budget, and when you consider the size of our organization, with only two full-time employees and a part-time employee, 15% is very significant. It is our understanding that our goal, or that our grant score in the allocation process was an 88, and was only two points below the funding cutoff. So when you're in school, an 88 isn't a bad score. But in this instance, it is a failing score because it results in a total loss of funding. But the people who will be losing the most are the elderly and disabled citizens of the City of Topeka, who will not receive transportation or other services provided at the senior center, when we will be forced to make significant cuts to both the number of people we serve and the services and activities we provide to them if we receive no funding from the city in 2020. We are requesting that the City Council consider either allocating additional funding to the social service grants to allow the Lulak Senior Center to be funded at at least some level in 2020, or drop the funding cutoff score to a more reasonable score and reallocate the total funding across the appropriate grant programs. Thank you very much for your consideration. We do have some people in the audience that are supporting the Lulak Senior Center. Will you please raise your hands? Thank you very much for your consideration.
Councilman Jensen.
Thank you. I have the same questions for you. What percentage of your total budget is this, and then what percentage of the program?
The program that we applied for is our full budget, so 15% of our full budget, full operating budget is what was requested.
And then for the specific program?
It's the same.
Okay, okay.
Our entire organization is a program that we apply for.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Chairman Cohen.
I wanted to start off and say that, you know, each year we all say the same thing as chairs. This is a really tough committee to be on. And, you know, our invocation today said bless our hard decisions, because it's always a hard decision to say no to somebody. And, you know, it's funny how we impose this pain on ourselves. Why do we do that each year? But this committee, this is my first year on the committee, and so I've learned a lot of new things. And one thing that I did learn is that we've been working on the process for a number of years, and I guess there are really some crazy stories about how things used to be, and we have a pretty good process now. And the way it works is all the, there's a certain amount of money, that's the unfortunate limitation, and then a whole lot more applicants for that money. And so, you know, we've been working on, let me finish this up. We've been working on the process for a number of years, and we do have a pretty good process right now. And if you guys remember, a couple of years ago, the Salvation Army applied, and they got turned down because their score was terrible. And I think it was because maybe their application was really bad. It was just a terrible application, and you hate to say no to something like that. But I remember that, and I remember there was a lot of, a lot of people that came up and talked about it, too, and that's sometimes some of the unfortunate outcomes of a committee like this. What I, one thing that I didn't know is that the process for how the committee and the whole submission process and all of that is established by the previous year's committee for our, for our committee. And so we went through the process, all of the applications were submitted, and they were scored, and all of the allocations were given. And it's like this every year, and you hate to say no to some people. And I'd like to allow my other committee members to talk, but that's kind of how we are, kind of where we are and how we got here today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lester? No comments. Councilmember Parija?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeff, for chairing the committee. It's, like you said, it's a tough one. Being a lifelong resident of Topeka and watching these council meetings, I've seen how discussion can get heated when it starts to looking at these allocations, because there are programs that we all support, and we'd like to see them to continue because they serve a purpose in this community. But it turns out, much like you say, why do we do this to ourselves? It's taking away from so someone else can have. And I guess I oversimplify it sometimes by saying if it's, if it's a certain amount of money that we have, and we have X amount of applicants, then I think those applicants, divided into that certain amount of money, gets their share of the pie. It may not be what they would like to have, but it is something to help them sustain their programs and to help encourage them to go out and get other funding. I think I learned something in this process, too, as this is my first year on the committee. And that is, talking with staff, I think they tried to make an honest effort at looking at all the applications. But it does come down to a point where I think it becomes kind of arbitrary, based on somebody's definition of being accurate, or being timely, or in some times, just coloring outside of the lines, and you get dinged for just doing that. And I think in talking to staff, they're comfortable with the process because it was put in place by previous committee members, and I think it's, has served a purpose. But in our discussions, we had as a committee, not only myself, but fellow council member and committee member noted that there were areas that could be adjusted and should be addressed in the process when it came to the weighting of some of the requirements being difficult to, I guess, validate as reasonable expectations for some of these programs. And it seems to me, much like what our presenters have said tonight, is those people who need it the most, who don't have the voice as strong as others, or the practice experience in applications, have come to the point where the three senior centers and the Latino family development, which all serve a community that is growing, our older generation is growing in this community, our Latino population is growing in this community. We need to serve them as much as we serve the young professionals that we seek to bring to this community. And I think that if we want them to live here, stay here, and maybe retire here, we need to let them know that there is just as important as every other effort that we're bringing to our city. And for me, I would like at least one more opportunity to look at the process. If it shakes out the way it is today, and there are no changes, then at least we've given it the scrutiny that I believe it deserves, as much as we look at some of the millions of dollars that we approve by just a quick vote without a whole lot of discussion. So for me, I would like to make... So for me, I would like to make a motion to remand the recommendations back to the committee to meet on July 16th, to discuss those recommendations from staff, and to reconsider those recommendations.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? We have a second by Deputy Mayor Clear. Now we're open for additional comments. Deputy Mayor Clear.
Okay. Being the chair of that committee for a few years, I, the process is forever changing, and I knew we researched other cities, and everyone does it differently, and you can do it differently, and not everybody's going to be happy with every way that you do it. However, my, my concern and focus is the social services funding priorities. And the funding priorities is senior citizen neighborhood-based programming. So we can't ignore that priority. If all of these agencies don't get funded, then we haven't, we haven't reached our priority. We haven't done its service. So I agree that it needs to be remanded back. And I also remember the first couple of years when the score was like 85. If you got 85 percent, you got funded. And then we ran low on money, so we raised it up to 89 percent. Well, if we could raise it, we can lower it. Because I'm not sure with the budget, how long we're going to have social services around because we're getting really, really tight. So I would agree with Councilmember Padilla.
Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will take from my time on that committee that those are some of the hardest decisions I've ever had to make. That is, if you talk about a gut-wrenching assignment that you'll lose sleep over, that is absolutely the top on my list of things that really, really require reflection. I just have a question for you, Mr. Chair. Did you run over real quickly the criteria for funding? My recollection is that it couldn't exceed 10 percent of the program budget, and then the, the score, but I don't, I don't remember for sure off the top of my head what it was.
Mr. Chair.
If, if, Chair, I think that the, and if I may, because I remember this from the budget, what we did say is that we didn't want to do a majority of the budget of an organization, and that we were not going to allow grants that were lesser than $10,000. And the reasoning behind that was that as grant writers, when we were working on the process, we understand that in the process of writing the grant, and doing the, the grant follow-ups, and doing everything that it takes, giving somebody a grant for less than $10,000 is pretty much paying them for their time to write the grant. But I see Sasha coming up. Sasha, if you would like to take the podium.
So to, in answer to your question, Madam Mayor, governing body members, there is no language in your priority sheet about any percentage of the overall program budget. There's a max cap. $25,000 is the most that agencies can apply for. $10,000 is the minimum that they can apply for. New programs, which we define a new program as one that the city has not funded the program or the agency, are capped at a $15,000 request amount.
Thank you. I recall when we had the committee, we, I thought we had implemented, or at least discussed it, that, you know, if indeed there was a situation like this where the funding wasn't there, that it was not catastrophic to the program, and it seemed like this is proving out why that might be necessary. You know, less than 10 percent of a budget, it's often easy to overcome, but, you know, 15 and 30 percent, that's, that's a substantial impact. So I'll support the committee's request to remand it back. Good luck and Godspeed. I do not envy you one bit.
Councilperson Martiz.
Thank you. I too will support remanding it back to the committee. Have we been through the appeal process yet? We have? Because I, I served on that committee until they kicked me off, and it is tough. It's, it's, it is tough. But I have my own issues with it. Like the appeal process, that's exactly what it is. And I remember the year that I sat on there, and Midland didn't get anything because the person that wrote the grant, that sent it in, and this is why they were appealing that year, their grant writer passed away. And they were emailing everything to her, and then when Midland finally figured it out that she was not alive, it was Betty Horton, and she knew how to write a grant. And then they came forward and said, we, they were asking for more information, and they didn't get that information to them. And so they didn't get the grant. At that particular time, I said, we need to make sure that we have two people, a CEO and a grant writer, if, for that company, but two people need to be notified, and not just continuously. So I think, I think there is some flaws, and if I wasn't mistaken, I thought it was you Karen that found some points that were miscalculated. I think we got that.
You did one, yeah.
Yeah, where the numbers were off. So maybe we need to go back and look at that. But those are the issues that I had and will continue to have, because it's our little people and our new people that always end up hurting. And, and I think some of the measurements was, was how do you measure this? How do you measure that? So I've always took that stance, but I'd be willing to see, see it go back and hope, you're hoping to look at it all over again, is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Heather.
Well, I have a question. I, I limited my review to what got sent forward to us. But I, if I recall correctly, the committee itself met more than once, you know, met, then heard appeals, had a meeting, had another meeting, and that the committee itself decided to support that recommendation and recommend it to us. Maybe there were only two of the three people there, but the committee had, had voted to send it forward, correct? There wasn't any information about what the appeals were, or what your deliberation is. Maybe you can share that with, with us. But particularly, Councilman Padilla, what would be different?
Councilwoman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. I think what would be different is that we would look at what the weighting was that was applied in some of the applications, and to see if those numbers were fair in the expectations of outcomes and outputs. That seemed to be a real confusing point for the applicants, even in their appeal. And so to be able to get that clarified, I think would help us again look at whether or not the process that is in place is worthy of reconsideration for adjustments. And if not, as a committee, then we could leave it as is. The, the committee met, but on more than one occasion, one of us was missing. And I understand that because of busy schedules and businessmen having their, their schedules conflict with what we are trying to do. And so, some of us would hear something, and some of us would hear something. And, and as the recommendation came to the council as a whole, I agreed to send it here so we could discuss this piece, so it could come back. But I was not in favor of the recommendations as presented by staff.
Oh, I see. I thought, I thought that's what the recommendation said. So that's, that's helpful. I appreciate that. I too have been on the committee and was involved in, in sort of getting it started. I do think, in terms of the importance of any particular agency, this, the committees in the past and the council have worked very hard at identifying priority areas, and both the council, as well as the agencies, and the staff have stuck pretty faithfully to that. We do have aging agencies, we have agencies that serve children, we, there was a, there's a list of, what, I think you were looking at it, I didn't, it wasn't in the packet, but we've got a list of, I don't know, five or six priority areas, and, and, and have looked that over. So what you're saying, maybe, because I did see some of the correspondence about it, is that you all didn't really challenge where the staff ratings were the first time?
Did you respect?
The, the staff ratings. Some of the elements get rated by staff, and some get rated by the review committee, correct?
Correct.
So you're wanting to take a deeper dive into?
Yes.
How the ratings were? Ah, okay.
Councilwoman Lesser.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um.
That's fine, that's fine.
No, it's okay. Counsel.
I'll reiterate, you know, this is a difficult task, and I think, first thing I do believe is, I think we do need to make a change moving forward, as whoever the designee is, that at least, there's at least one person that is a carryover every year on this committee because the learning curve is as such that you spend all your time trying to get caught up to what the process is. I'm not sure what we accomplished by, by sending this back to committee, quite frankly. As I evaluate that, I look at, we're either going to send it back to committee to change the way that the process was done, which, if we do that, is going to also affect 15 other organizations that did follow the, the process, that have been awarded money, that now are in the process of, if we send this back again, they're going to be waiting as well. The only other reason or aspect I can see of sending this back to committee is for there to be a change, which would require one of the no votes to, to change that, and I don't believe that exists either under the situation, this situation. That being said, to me, I think it then becomes the burden of the council as a whole to decide whether or not we want to discuss with the city manager if there's some additional funding to review, to fund these organizations that have appealed and don't feel that, that the process was correct. Because the deal is, is reality of this is, we send this back one time, we can send it back four times, and there's going to be somebody who doesn't think that the weighting factor is correct. There's going to be somebody that thinks that this question doesn't apply to them, and it shouldn't apply. There's not going to be a perfect one. Did we notice there were things that probably can be changed, tweaked? Yes, but, you know, the, the, the typical thing that happens with that is, then when you do that, there's going to be another group that's going to come up and say, whoa, 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 you know, if you do that, this is how it affects us and our scoring. So if, if the, if the goal is to send it back to committee to come out and review a process that is completely fair, that everybody's going to be happy at the end of the day, we're never going to be able to report back to you because that's not going to happen. I think at this point in time, we have four organizations that have thoughts that I think if, if there's a process that we can look for other funds to help them, I would be amenable to looking at that. But we also have 15 organizations that we've followed the process, made arrangements after this has been done, and further delaying that creates now hardship on those 15 organizations for, for an outcome that I don't know if it's going to necessarily be any different anyway. Thank you.
Councilwoman Mace.
Thank you, Mayor. Along those same lines, I, I also, I'm not sure what exactly it accomplishes to send it back to committee unless we do something to change the weightings and, and things here. They're going to have the same information, they're likely to come up with the same decisions. I also, I've nev, I've not served on this committee before, so I don't have the way that the weightings are put together and things like that. And so, I, I guess my question, after looking at the list here, we've got several organizations that have multiple programs that they've applied for, Boys and Girls Club, Breakthrough House, Community Action, Jayhawk Area Agency on Aging. When you put all those together, it basically adds up to like 210,000 out of a $435,000 budget, which is approx, it's just a little less than half. Is there any weighting given to the number of grants that you apply for? Because some of these are just individual grants that they've applied for, not a whole lot. And others, if, you know, we have one organization that applied for $75,000 for it.
So in answer to your question, Councilmember Mace, the only weighting that is used in this process is if they're, and I'm going to try really hard to explain this concisely to you. If there's an agency that applies for a new program, but they're an agency that we have funded in the past, then we don't have some of the elements that are scored, such as past grant administration, timely reporting, things like that. So whereas, an, an agency that's applying for a program that's been funded for many years, they will have 100 points possible, then the weight is given to an agency that we've funded in the past, but they're applying for a new program, and theirs could be 70 points possible instead of 100, because they don't have a past history on that program. Does that make sense?
I think.
I'm doing my best.
Thanks.
Deputy Mayor.
But they can only do four programs.
There may be a limit.
I mean, we had a limit, they can't keep applying for more.
We don't have a limit on the number of programs. It's not on the priority sheet, it's not anywhere in the RFP that I'm aware of.
I think we talked about that, there were, someone had talked about making it a limit, which is what I thought we were talking about.
Councilwoman Heller.
The kinds of things that are being discussed, one of the things, if I had some input in, in what was going to be for next year, even last year, when they, one of those agencies anyhow had added one or even two programs, to make it so that you couldn't, that any new program, regardless of whether the agency had been involved before, had to have the 15,000 limit, and had to be eligible, was eligible only if there's money left at the end of the round, the, the way it's set up for the new agencies now. I mean, those are the kinds of things that the committees have typically worked out after the round of the year, in terms of looking forward and saying, lessons learned, what do we want to do or not do in the future. For me, having been a director of, of a nonprofit before, and been through this process many times, I think it's really valuable that this money is core money for agencies that have already proved themselves, not for new programs, but for established programs to sustain continuity and services in our community. And we've pretty well set it up that way. But all those kinds of things you would want to talk about, and it's been hard to serve on that committee, for every one of us that has done that, but you talk about it for the next year. There, there has been value, even as awkward as it's been, that the, the committee of, of year, of the current year, then when they finish the process, looks it over, sets up, sets up recommendations for either a repeat or change for the future year, brings that to the council so that we all have some input on that, too, but that, so that by January, it's locked and is ready to go for that future process. That part has actually, you know, we may want to change the way we do it, but that, that calendar has worked well for us.
Deputy Mayor.
I'm kind of concerned and kind of sad that putting it back to the committee, two people weren't going to change their minds because you haven't even discussed what could be changed. I, I think that's kind of sad that you wouldn't listen to some new ideas. And I think the, the job of the committee is to solve it before you go to the city manager. I mean, I think that's something you need to do. But I'll reiterate, we can't ignore the priorities. You can't just say, nope, we can't, aren't doing the elderly programs, because that is our priority. Did you look at all the weighting, and did you go in depth on all that?
Before, before the conversation continues, I want to ensure that Councilman Mace was done, because he was asking for clarification, and then council members were reporting back to him, but we kind of switched gears. So Councilmember Mace, I want to make sure that you know that you still have the floor.
Keep going, I'm fine.
All right. Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't answer for the chair or for Councilmember Lesser. I don't know that there was that much discussion about the imp- I don't know that there was that much discussion about the intricacies of the process. I knew some of it from meeting with staff, but there was not that much discussion in the committee meetings themselves. Again, like I said, they weren't all there at the same time sometimes, and so it's kind of hard to get all the same information. But I understand what Councilman Lesser is saying, that he feels that if we do this, it's going to be an exercise in futility because there's only so much money and if we make a recommendation to change some of the allocations, there are going to be people who feel like they're being penalized. And I don't want to penalize people who followed the rules that they put in place. However, I just don't think that, like Chairman Cohen says, that we've given enough thought to why do we do this to ourselves if we all sit here and say that it's that difficult to serve on a committee and let's fund it at a rate so that we don't have to go through this process of telling people no. Not giving them everything that they need, have, or want, but giving them that it helped them sustain their programs. And look at the multiple requests. If Tony Emerson has four or five programs going and I have two, and he gets everything and I get nothing, that doesn't seem like an equitable program situation for me in consideration, regardless of whether or not his programs are good or not. It still doesn't seem like a fair cut of the pie for the funds that we have available for this, for the service.
So I just want to make sure that as a body, we understand what's happening, and I think that our hearts are trumping our rationale a little bit, I think that for all of us. And one of the reasons that this system was implemented was because these are taxpayer dollars that we are giving as grants. We are one of the few municipalities in the nation that actually has a grant program. And I'm not saying that as something to applaud the city for because it's not, but it's just that we really believe in the nonprofit organizations that we have in our community. And amidst all of the challenges that we've had in our budgets, and amidst the fact that we give, I think, $1.6 million to nonprofits through the Department of Neighborhood Relations and other things that we do in our community, we still have an additional pool, that's an additional pool on top of the other money that we're giving, that is this pool that we're debating upon. And it's been looked upon and it's a challenging pool, but what the committee did in the first year of its inception, and the council wanted to do it this way for the council members that were not around, is because before, it used to be a process of the nonprofits coming to the board meeting, and then we would be here till 2:00 in the morning sometimes, and I'm not exaggerating when I'm saying 2:00, because each of the nonprofits would come here and provide their testimony. What we ended up finding with time and after working with staff was the fact that, let's say that Organization X says, we are requesting $20,000 to do 10 lines of services, and we were saying, okay, so you're going to do 10 lines of services with the money that we're giving you. We were looking at the applications and only five were getting done. And then not only that, but then we started talking to staff, and we started talking to staff about how are the reports being brought back? Because that's staff time. Not only are we giving the dollars, but there's also the dollars that we're investing in the staff to evaluate the processes and the reports. And we ended up finding out that a lot of organizations were not even meeting the basic reporting criteria of saying, this is the financial statements, these are the things that are coming. And one of the things that we have wanted to do with our funds is to ensure that the organizations that are receiving these funds are upholding their promise to the people. That's what this is here for. And I will never forget, because Karen and I, or Councilwoman Heller and I, were in the first committee, and we said very clearly, the hardest thing of this whole process is going to be that there's going to be organizations that are not going to meet the minimum threshold, and we're going to have to say no. Now for me to hear, personally, for me to hear that the Latino Community Group is not going to receive any funds, it breaks my heart. Because right now, the Latino community is facing a whole bunch of challenges in our nation, and I know that the programs that we have here are spectacular. But then the question is, what happened in that process? And sometimes, as a nonprofit organization, one of the hardest things for me to do was to hear that I didn't get a grant that I applied for. But it didn't mean that the organization that didn't give me the grant was a bad organization, is that either I didn't write the grant correctly, either there was a limited capacity for money, but we kept on working with those organizations to see that we would get the money the next year. So I'm not saying that our system is perfect, because I don't think that any system is going to be perfect. But what I don't want the body to lose sight of is the fact that these are taxpayer dollars that we do want to invest in our community, that we do want to make sure that we support our senior citizens because they're vulnerable. But all of these vulnerable populations have administrators that are reporting back, and those scores are based on performance. The majority of the scoring, 70% of the scoring, I think, comes from, did you do the services that you said that you were going to do? At least when I was, you know, working with the process. It was like 35% of, did you do what you said that you were going to do? If you said that you were going to serve 10 people, that you served the 10 people the way that you said? And the other scoring was based on, did you provide the reports when you said that you were going to report them, and are they correct? And that in itself, I think, took care of 70% of the scoring. So I just want us to remember that this process was established just so that every single organization that we were giving funds to, we could look back at our community and say, we are safeguarding your dollars. We are safeguarding your dollars. And it's really hard when our heart gets in the way. But we just want to make sure that we are safeguarding the dollars that we have in our community. Deputy Mayor, you had a statement, I think, or somebody else had risen their hand.
I had one more.
Chair Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, sometimes I wonder, you know, why we have a committee process just in general because the Policy and Finance Committee has been meeting a whole lot of meetings, and we're revising the personnel code, like hundreds and hundreds of lines of code, and we can't say, you know, on the second page, what did you guys discuss? You know, you need to go watch the video. And that's, I mean, that's why we have this process, is to take the committee's recommendations. I mean, sometimes it hurts. So, thank you, Mayor.
So if there's no further comments, I think that at this point in time, we have the opportunity to make a vote to remand the documents back to the committee, or to deny that, and then the council would have to take action on whether approving or denying the recommendation made by the committee. So a yes vote would remand it back to the committee, a no vote would leave it right here on the table, that the council could make a determination if they accept or deny. So there would be another motion to follow that. There's no further questions? We proceed by voting.
Okay, we have seven yes with Heller, Cohen, and Lesser voting no.
The motion carries. So at this point in time, this will be remanded back to the committee for evaluation, and we will receive a final report from the committee.
One more, thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, we were talking about July 16th on that date, is that something that's been set in stone?
Point of order, Mayor.
For that meeting.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
We've been doing this a lot. When we vote, that's final. Lisa, can you explain that? We should not have any more discussion after that. And I talked to Lisa about that. We voted, and it's voted to go back, and we've been doing that a lot, and I've been wanting to say this for a long time. Lisa, can you elaborate on that? Whenever we vote and we announce the final vote, that ends discussion.
Councilwoman, the question that he's got is with regards to the process, with regards to our budget.
The date.
The date.
Yeah, it was, I think we had something, we had a...
I'm so sorry. If we could have at least for the councilwoman's...
Thank you.
City Attorney, could you please elaborate?
Yes, so any decision that's made after a motion is made that's contrary to what the motion is, you can't talk about it. But if, he's clarifying, if that date's available, I think that's okay. But if you're talking about, do we go back, do we not, then obviously you can't do that. The vote has been taken, that decision's made, it gets remanded, and that's it.
So Councilwoman Cohen, your question was with regards to the dates for the budget process?
Right, I was just saying, is that the date that's going to be on the calendar, July 16th? And do we have a time set forth on that, since we're sending it back to that committee?
City Manager.
Right now, that is the date that has been put out at 9:00 a.m. on the 16th. But as chair, you obviously could make a decision related to checking the calendars, that if a different date was better for your committee, you can cancel that meeting and have a different date if that is your desire. So as chair, you can decide when you would like to have the meeting.
Yeah, it looks like we've already penciled in a time, so it looks like we've kind of blocked out that date anyway. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move on to item B, if the clerk would read.
B is discussion of impossible action on the 2020 proposed City of Topeka operating budget.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm asking our Budget Director, Deputy Director of Finance, Nick Hawkins, to come forward, and he'll make a few comments regarding the budget.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So tonight on our calendars is a discussion and potential action on amendments for the 2020 operating budget. We've had two public workshops on June 19th and June 25th. We received questions at each of those meetings, and then some follow-up questions after that. Last week, we sent the responses to the first, from the first workshop, and then this afternoon, we sent over responses from the workshop last Tuesday. And both of those should be on your desk right now. And the first thing that I would do is just offer to go over any questions you have on that process, and if there are any follow-up questions. I know there are a couple that are still outstanding, but at least the questions that were received at the workshops, we've provided responses to those.
City Manager, Nick, pardon the interruption. I am looking at the time, our meeting is slated to end at 6:20 today, and we have two individuals signed up, both for budget and for public comment. And my concern is that between the first round of comments, that's eight minutes, you add that, it's 16 minutes, and it is 6:03 right now, so that will culminate our meeting.
Yeah. I understand that, and for me, I think the most important thing is, is that you have the information. That's what Nick was trying to say, is that we presented the information as far as answers to the questions that were initially presented. I've had some inquiries from another council member about potential changes, or two or three, actually, that they might want to make within the budget. We know that we wouldn't be able to decide tonight regarding amendments, because I haven't been able to fully answer the impact of those amendments, and would ask that we defer this item to either the 9th or the 23rd, depending on your pleasure. I think that, given that we're not able to talk at all tonight, I think it would be better that we defer to the 9th with the expectation that we discuss the items that maybe people are considering for amendments, and then, you know, hopefully, we have to, we should, I should say it that way, we should wrap this up by July 23rd in order to be able to be prepared for the August 13th approval. Is that based on what timeline we have talked about in the past? Nick?
We can make that timeline work, just the way the schedule is this year, and still be prepared for the 13th.
And if I could add an additional statement, I would really encourage the council members to submit your amendments prior to the meeting, because that really allows the staff to plug it in, to work with it. One of the things that we have worked on in the last few years is making sure that the staff has that, so that they could then come back to us and they could then present us. This would be amendment, list of amendment A, this is what the budget would look like, list of amendments B, this is what the budget would look like, and it would really expedite the conversation if we're able to do that, so...
Thank you, that's what I was, my last comment was going to be.
Same page. Councilwoman Heller.
Along those lines, I want to thank the city manager, he and I, I'm sure others as well, but it had a really good meeting about the budget. One option to keep in mind is that sometimes a suggestion that somebody might have is a little sensitive or whatever, or you just want to kind of float it. I've really appreciated that the city manager is available for that. Also, in the past, one of the things we've done is vetted it publicly and then with city manager or whoever, and then have said, for instance, we would like to see this many dollars replenished in X, and left it up to the city manager to make the decision on exactly what those choices would be. So with that in mind, I hope that it would always be okay for people to make suggestions for you that didn't have to turn right around and get published, you know, whether it's a, you know, just to be able to talk with you about things, and so I appreciate that.
Yes, I appreciate the opportunity to have that input, and then I'm allowed to run things through the system related to staff, and for them to be able to show me the impacts, provide that information back, and then we can evaluate whether that's something that needs to come forward for all.
Wonderful. We do have two individuals signed up to speak on this item. The first one is Mr. Clark Trammell.
Thank you, Mr. Trammell. Second person is Mr. Joseph Ledbetter.
Never miss an opportunity. Thank you, governing body. I know the time is short on this meeting, but I want to get some things on the record that I would like you to definitely be considering as you put this budget together. The one, the first concept that I've been talking about for several years is productivity. And since our population is declining, and that's a fact, we need to be looking at how to work our budgets much smarter with your people. I'm not talking about your first responders, but I am talking about the rest of the staff, which would include the construction of distribution lines by your water department. I came up with the fact that we now have, over the years, we put in 400, or, excuse me, 241 miles of iron pipe into very corrosive soil, probably should have never been done. We had engineers actually doing that to our system, and although they're no longer here, we get to live with it. And we have got to come up with smarter ways to fix these pipes and do it quicker, so that we don't have rates go through the roofs, and not just on our residents, but also on our employers. We have employers that use a lot of water, and I can't imagine them wanting to look at year after year, 5% and 6% rate increases. We've got to work smarter, we've got to start using these ending balances of cash that we've got in these reserves to replace these pipes. And I will also say that on the street repairs, last week I observed a private contractor actually repairing streets down on South Topeka Boulevard, and lo and behold, they were actually using pressurized air to clean out those potholes before they repaired them, which means they're going to actually stay fixed and not be the zombie potholes that we've had for the last four and five and maybe 10 years. And it's absolutely imperative that we use more of these private contractors. I don't remember the name of them, it was not Beddits, it wasn't anybody local, but they appear to be doing a good job, and much better than what I've seen sometimes with other people. And so we've got to work smarter, we've got to make sure that these repairs last. The county uses those methods, Beddits uses those methods. There's no reason that our staff can't adjust and make sure that these repairs are done properly so that they last. We're dealing with millions and millions of dollars of money every year. And I would also add that it has a negative effect when it tears up not only the automobiles and fleets of our own private contractors and our citizens, but also our own equipment. We have over 800 vehicles that belong to the City of Topeka. So this extra wear and tear on them is also to be considered. We absolutely need to make sure that our police are fully funded and staffed, and I absolutely believe in the CIT program, that that needs to continue to be fully funded. That is an area, dealing with the mental health issues in this town, it's not just in Topeka, but it is absolutely imperative that that unit be funded so that they can interface and interact and make sure that some of the crime doesn't happen because people off their meds. That's the way they explained it to me. So these are just some of my concerns. I ask that we continue to look at productivity, gaug... look at productivity gains wherever we can get them, whether it's in code enforcement, whether it's in street repairs, or whether it's in how we build water distribution lines and not just repair them, but replace them so we don't have to keep going back and repairing them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We now move on to the announcements. Sitting at, if the clerk would read.
For the night agenda, we have, on the consent agenda, we have a lease for telecom equipment. Action items include Sherwood Crossing PUD. We have an ordinance for Tim's Auto Sales at 6060 Northeast US 24 Highway Zoning Ordinance. We have a zoning resolution for Giant Communications at 5031 Southwest 28th Street. Another zoning ordinance at 2907 Northwest Topeka Boulevard. We have the water labor contract. Notice of public hearing for the operating budget on August 13th. We have the discussion for an RIP contractor license renewal process. Discussion on the 2015 Uniform Mechanical Code and Black Flow Cross Connection Ordinances and then a discussion on the budget.
City Manager?
For the sake of the meeting, I'm just not going to make comments. Anybody going to make comments? Deputy Mayor?
Oh.
Oh. Everybody was saying no, so I'm just.
I just wanted to make sure and ask everyone to follow the ordinance for the fireworks. We tried to make that to make everybody happy. You still get to shoot them, but then you're not supposed to shoot them so the people that don't like them don't have to listen to them for two weeks. So follow the ordinance and clean up your mess.
Okay, so now we move on to the final public comments. Mr. Clark Trammell.
Good evening. Nice to see you all again. June 18th was the last time I was here. And I, I want to reiterate a few things that I said to you then and add a comment. I agree with what Mr. Ledbetter is saying again. Seems like I followed up to support him, but he needs to hear it. And you all need to be aware that he's not the only one that feels the way about doing more with less. I know you've heard it and now you're hearing it again. Two things I'm here to talk to you about quickly. One is to reiterate the storm I brought to your attention last week about the narrowing of 12th Street. The voices are getting louder. There are more people contributing. It is something that is really bothering this community that they don't understand. And even if they did, they don't want to see it happen. So I hope you all responding to the emails from the community and are getting out to enter into this discussion and look at a way that we can get past this and get on to the business of the day and the things that you're talking about now that really need your attention to lead this city in a forward direction. The second thing I wanted to bring to your attention, if you're not aware of it, is another storm, Parks and Rec. I've been watching these meetings for years. I've been coming here. You all have been coming here. I've never seen somebody from Parks and Rec, even though the county is now handling that, give you a report, talk to you about the budget, talk to you about what they're doing, why they're doing it, what your concerns are for the city. Because think about it, they're managing it as your contractor, but the parks are in the city. They're degrading. They need work. They need help. They need a lot of things that aren't happening. There are things they're talking about at the County Commission about allocating millions of dollars to maybe a certain project that has nothing to do with the whole community. You all need to be aware of that. It is your job to look after this city and these parks and the people that use it. That's quality of life and quality of place. If I were on this council, I would ask the city manager to have somebody from Parks and Rec give me a report to this council on a regular basis for your input and guidance because they are managing your, our assets. Beyond that, this conversation you had earlier about budgeting and spending money for the nonprofits was a really great conversation. And the only thing I would add is with Mr. Padilla and others who kind of alluded to that, is that one thing, when I used to do grant writing and grant underwriting, you have to look at not just the grading system because that's like traffic counts. They don't tell the whole story. The whole story is what the numbers tell you, but also what is the project and the importance that that social activity plays to the community. It may not be in the statistics or the data, but it is in the quality of life and your citizens' care and welfare. So I appreciate your taking a relook at that. And Jeff, I would suggest you look at what it is and the importance that that plays in the community and give it a wait. Because sometimes I may not fill the form out right, that doesn't mean it's not a program that we shouldn't invest in. I thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Next person signed up is Mr. Joseph Ledbetter. There are no executive sessions. At this point in time, this meeting is adjourned.